I'll call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order and ask you to please stand. We have Pastor David Fugit from the Davis Memorial Mount Carmel United Methodist Church lead us into invocation and remain standing and Kendra Hayden will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change and to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes through debate today, that they're not only leaders, but also servants and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that, no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of these among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in mind, body and spirit, the strangers, immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by Spirit of justice and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
[inaudible]
A few people in the office, we're not talking ourselves for a change. Thank you all for coming. And we'll get right into it. The agenda is on the boards in front of you. We have no amendments and I'm aware of the agenda, is that correct? If no one has anything, we'll get right down into the presentation. I believe we have a resolution in support of National Police Week.
Do you need to read it?
Yes, sir.
While I'm reading it, if you want to come to the front with our chief law enforcement officers, we'll get a nice photo op. This will be the resolution of the Smith County Board of Supervisors in honor of law enforcement officers in National Police Week, whereas more than 80,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Smith County Law Enforcement Agencies, and whereas since the first reported death in 1786, more than 26,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the action in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC, where the names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 245 officers killed in 2022 and 34 this year, and whereas the candlelight vigil is part of a National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 14th through 20th, and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags shall be flown at half staff. And whereas Smith County prides itself in the four agencies of Smith County that protect and serve its citizens, including the Smith County Sheriff's Office, the Town of Chilhawee Police Department, Town of Marion Police Department, Town of Saltwater Police Department, for their dedication, passion, enthusiasm, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of police officers by recognizing National Police Week. Now therefore be evolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors declare the week of May 14th to May 20th, 2023, to be National Police Week in Smith County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted this 11th day, May 2023.
I guess we need a motion to adopt it now. Have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a quick comment. You mentioned the National Law Enforcement Memorial wall, and I would just like for us to take a moment in silence to remember Corporal Christopher Pascal, who's killed a lot of D U here in the county, and his daughter just celebrated her 19th birthday. It's an emotional time for her without her father, and just think that it would be great if this board could honor him.
That was Officer Pascal. I don't know if any of you remember, go right ahead.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank all of you for your leadership and your respect to law enforcement departments. I feel like in our county, we have top-notch law enforcement represented in all our towns and our county, and the service you give to the school system and the citizens is second to none, and I just want to personally thank you all, Ms. Moore and myself, for the job that you all do day in, day out, and I know how tough the job is that I see today. Thank you.
It's hard to support the blue when you're wearing black and brown.
We're all one.
I hope you realize, and all four agencies hopefully realize, we support all of you. We appreciate it.
I'm proud to personally know most of these guys, see them all the time, and they're good friends, they do a great job, a thankless job that goes unappreciated many times. The old saying, you only see bad things that happen, bad things happen in everything we've got, no matter what we do, but don't overlook the good things, they far outweigh the bad things that happen. They all doing a job supporting our families, every one of them, I trust them with my life, which I do, and I hope they stay friends with me from now. Thank you very much, you do a great job, fellas.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment? Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe it's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Moving on down to, we go into the resolution in support of National EMS Week. Do we have, yeah, we have EMS here, so. I'm assuming that's what you're hearing. That's an assumption on my part.
Okay, so, resolution of the Smith County Board of Supervisors in honor of Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services agencies are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams with a career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas the Smith County prides itself in the five agencies of Smith County that provides emergency medical services, Town of Chilhawee, Town of Marion, Sugar Grove Life Saving Crew, and Smith County for their dedication, passion, and enthusiasm, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore it is resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors declares the week of May 21st to May 27th, 2023, to be Emergency Medical Services Week in Smith County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted this 11th day, May 2023.
All righty, we have, we've already taken the pictures and everything now, I hope we'll adopt it. We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We'll take a moment and say thank you, thank you, because I know we don't have statistics on it, but I can imagine how many lives have been saved as a direct result of your all's tireless efforts, and the amount of training that these people have to go through to do these jobs is unreal, and it is passion, and it is, I just want to say thank you for all you do.
And thank you for supporting us.
I'd like to echo those comments to the first.
I'm not going to cry this time. I just want to echo that as well and say thank you, I know there's been lots of meals missed and family time missed and events and holidays and all the things, but thank you all for what you do, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All righty, any more discussion? Mr. Clay, I thank you also, because you've been at it many years, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sound like that was unanimous. Convey our best wishes to the rest of the crews.
Oh, I will.
We really appreciate the work and effort they put into it.
We thank you for supporting us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Let's just skip this next one, if we skip that, we won't have as big a budget for this. All righty, Smith County School Board Budget Presentation. Okay, oh, okay, wow, thank you.
You just have to have the touch.
You just share the next, share the next.
Good evening, thank you all for having us here today. I would like to begin by thanking our Budget Committee, our Board Chair, Mr. Jesse Choak, our Madam Vice Chair, Mrs. Susan Williams, and Dr. Kyle Rhodes, board member for serving on our Budget Committee. I also want to thank Julie Baer, Dr. Spencer, Mr. Sturgill, and Dr. Williams for working with our team to help develop the budget going into FY24. The budget challenge is real, right? And I know that Mr. Utte has shared with you all, with your Budget Committee, as well with full board, that the state is in turmoil as far as adoption of a budget, but we do have one to present to you tonight with numbers that will change, and we fully expect this budget to shift, and I think to really...
I should do that next, but...
If you'd attended that class on computers, we'd have had it.
That class is offered in the school system.
I thought we needed to bring our batteries, I wasn't sure.
BYB, words on the computer.
We're sorry for that. No, goodness gracious, that's okay. If you want to go to the...
Yeah, just get a little closer to it.
Okay, so I will walk back and, well, yeah, I'll walk back and forth. No, that's okay. So, budget development has been challenging, to say the least. There are lots of mention in the media regarding the calculation error by the Department of Education back in June of '22. That impacted FY23 and FY24. When the General Assembly met, they did make FY23 whole, so we didn't see any gaps in our budget for this current fiscal year. However, they did not make adjustments to FY24 off of the calculation template. Therefore, the General Assembly, along with this issue and others, they've adopted the skinny budget, and the skinny budget is truly a placeholder with the General Assembly in hopes that they will come back and revisit the budget holistically and fund more things. There are lots of bills that are setting out waiting for approval due to the skinny budget being approved. The reconvene session, also called the veto session, was held on April the 12th, and we had full expectation that on April the 12th, the General Assembly would have a budget to react to. Unfortunately, that did not happen, and here's why. The story goes that our governor issued a push for tax cuts, and what happened at that point, we hit a stalemate, and the reason why is primaries will be conducted on June the 20th. So you had people that were vying for either Republican or Democratic seats that did not want to anchor to tax cuts or anchor to spending. So we have a stalemate until the primaries are held and carried out at the state level. So, again, from House appropriations being shared with us and our local legislators, that it will not be approved, any type of budget shift, until after the primaries happen. So again, unfortunately, politics at the state level getting in the way of budget approvals. Both the House and Senate, a little bit coming out of the General Assembly, both the House and Senate had a 7% raise, whereas a skinny budget has a 5% raise built in, and what we did was we took the budget and we built our raises on a 5% raise right now going into the budget development phase. And we did that cautiously, understanding that the likelihood of the General Assembly reconvening after the primaries are concluded is extremely likely. What we're hearing from all of our legislators is it's going to happen. Zach Robbins with House Appropriations tells us he feels confident it's going to happen, and what we do know is that the House and Senate Budget Conferences are meeting now and into next month to work out a budget solution for the state. The difficulty with this and developing a budget is the timeline. The date that we're hearing of a reconvene is June the 24th, which is a Saturday, but if they reconvene on the 24th, when we actually receive the number that we can use to develop a budget, it's about five to seven days after they meet and approve a budget. That puts us into FY24. We have to have a budget moving in prior to July 1. So that's why we come before you today with a budget that is likely not going to hold true as we continue to move forward with the General Assembly action. So, again, built on a 5% raise, that's a 5% across the board, top and bottom of the salary scale, in all categories, a 5% raise. What drives our funding from the state and the locality is our ADN, and when you look at our enrollment, the projection for FY23-24, we're projecting 3,677 students, a drop of 115 students from this current school year. Some highlights within the Smith County budget, Smith County schools. One, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I know that there's been lots of recognition, and I want to highlight our staff. We have an amazing staff, and not just our teachers, but our bus drivers, our custodial, our administrative assistants, just a phenomenal staff that we have in Smith County schools. We have 687 full-time employees, 39 part-time employees, 205 teachers or administrators with a master's degree, and within this budget, again, a 5% raise for all employees and will change if General Assembly addresses that change. Transportation, we have a very robust transportation system, as you can see, 56 bus routes, and 56 bus routes, and most have two different routes during the afternoon, so we'll have typically a country run and a town run, robust routes. We drive, on average, 3,219 miles per day, which gives us 576,000 miles driven per year. So it's a very robust transportation system. Food service, 12 cafeterias, all students eat it, no cost, that's through a federal program, federal dollars coming in. It has worked really well for us, we have lots of students that are partaking of that program. We do offer after-school snack programs, fresh fruit and vegetable programs, and total number of meals served this year, projecting out through the end of next week, 704,000 meals, and that's breakfasts and lunch, so a lot of food being served. One thing I would like to tout is, and you know, I think the relationship with the Board of Supervisors and the school board is extremely strong, and I think that partnership speaks for itself in lots of different ways, and before I even get into the pictures and then I highlight those partnerships, there's one there of Mr. Wildner there at the bottom screen, that was purposeful. That's right. But one of the greatest partnerships, in my opinion, that's happened in recent time is a partnership with the Board of Supervisors, the Smith Foundation, Virginia Highlands Community College, and Withlow Community College, being able to provide a free college tuition for all students who graduate Smith County schools, and that's accolades to you and seeing the vision and the possibilities of the kids we serve, and being able to remove barriers for kids to find success, that's what we're all about. We try to find ways to remove any type of barrier that a child may have in order to be successful in life. A couple of the, and I'll just, I'll start at the top and work my way across, top left hand is just some of our special friends visiting the public library there, so we have great relationships with all of our public libraries. The upper middle one is tied to United West Southwest Virginia for the Opportunity Fair that has lots of employers that come together in having to, and our kids are able to rotate around and see different opportunities. The upper right-hand side, Emory and Henry College, and we had, that's a visit by some more of our special friends there that were able to visit the college, but I would like to highlight the partnership with Smith County School in Emory and Henry with the Lab School, which is phenomenal opportunity for our high school students to be able to pursue classes that tie to a medical profession or behavioral health, so that's a tremendous move for Smith County as a whole. Bottom left-hand side, that is at the Lincoln Theater, and it ties to our Youth Government Day as well as the Chamber of Commerce for our Career Opportunity Day. The middle there, how could we even discuss partnerships without mentioning the Sheriff's Office and what they do for us? It's great to see them recognized tonight along with all law enforcement. Having a school resource officer in all of our schools is phenomenal, and that's a joint effort with us and with you all and grant funds and the Sheriff's Department, but we cannot thank you enough for that safety feature. And the bottom right-hand side, and then I'll jump to the one right above, but the bottom right-hand side is our Skills USA, some kids from our Career and Technical Center, and just to highlight some of our partnerships there with our HVAC program, our CNC program, building trades, we have lots of industries that partner with us, there are internship opportunities or guest lecturers that come into our Career Center. But if you haven't had a chance to visit our Career Center, please come visit, we're very proud of the opportunities our youngsters have. And something new that we did this year, the picture right above on the right-hand side, that is tied to our Fentanyl Awareness Day, and I would say that that is probably one of the most moving days that we had as a vision in my tenure as Superintendent in Smith County, and it's an opportunity for kids to visit with vendors and visit with folks and learn more about overdose and fentanyl and be able to combat that with Narcan. So it was a very good event, unfortunately, we know that that has infiltrated our community, as Mr. Wildner can attest, and being able to equip students and staff, and staff, with the ability to counteract the effects is tremendous, so a great event there. So we can't really talk about Smith County schools in isolation without talking about the partnerships that we have within the community, and we're very proud of those. The skinny budget, and again, this has been quite difficult to navigate and land on a position to where we can move forward with a raise, but with this, the skinny budget state revenue, you're going to see a decrease of $2,622,000. A lot of that is tied to, if you remember, this year we had construction money in FY23. The state allocated $2.1 million for Smith County Schools' construction. So, '24, it's not there, so that money backs out. That in addition to some enrollment loss, you saw the enrollment loss that we mentioned, we're seeing a decrease in state funds. You are seeing, however, an increase in local revenue, and this is, again, thanks to you all in conversations with Mr. Utte and leadership of your Budget Committee on the Board of Supervisors as well, but the goal and the aspiration, to my understanding, and we're thankful for this goal, to get back to 115% of required local effort. And this increase of $442,000, based on a house budget, so let's say the house budget does end up playing true, would be 5% above required local effort, so that is a great first step to getting there. So we're thankful for that conversation and thankful for the move forward. In fact, without that additional revenue with the current budget, the skinny budget, we could not have attained the 5% raise, it could not have happened, so that is tremendous. Federal revenue, you'll see an increase of $3 million. We are forward-thinking in the fact that we know that there are two large projects that will be implemented and completed in FY24, our restroom renovation and our auditorium renovation, the total cost of that is $2.9 million, so we put those funds in as in-anticipated federal revenue to keep from having to come back and do any type of budget amendment, so doing that on the front side with the budget approval process. State sales taxes seen a slight, well, an increase of $236,000. Other revenue, and this is a unique piece, and we have vetted it with our auditors, and we did speak with Mr. Utte as well, but I want to explain the $2.2 million increase within the other revenue line. Other revenue, we typically run around $2.7 million. We're seeing a slight uptick in other revenue in FY24, but you'll see that number is $2.2 million, that's a tremendous increase. The $2.1 million allocated to Smith County Schools in '23, FY23, for construction has not been utilized at this point, and here's why. We've been utilizing our ESTER funding to complete our projects, so we, there's only so many contractors and so much work that can happen at one time, so we're keeping contractors busy, risks going on, the construction work happening, till we deplete the ESTER funding, so we anticipate that $2.1 construction money carrying forward into FY24. So when you look at that increase of $2.2 million, a small portion of that is an increase in other revenue, but the lion's share, $2.1 million, is that construction money showing in FY24 revenue as other funds. So that's how we've built the budget, that's how we've built that construction money to carry forward into FY24. We can revisit it any way you like, but it's a nice way to be able to track those funds and to account for it in FY24 from the budget approval and appropriation process. All right, I'm trying really hard here. Oh, there we go. Wow. Okay. Now, so that was the revenue side, let's look at the expenditure for just a minute. You'll see, and the majority of this is tied to an increase, especially in construction, you're seeing an increase of $1.5 million raises, that's the 5% raise, and that's reflected there with the $1.5 million. Administrative costs, administration, and that includes our nursing program, you're seeing a decrease of $102,000. We, in the FY23 budget, we put PPE cost into the FY23 budget, knowing what COVID might, how COVID may impact in this year, so we had some funds placed there. In addition, in transportation, we had some funds placed there for cleaning supplies as well in relation to potential COVID concerns. Operations and maintenance, you're seeing a drop there of $851,000. That is purposeful. FY23 state budget was very rich, and knowing that we would see a downturn in FY24, money was put into capital improvement projects in operations and maintenance, knowing it would be a one-time expense, so it was not a reoccurring cost. Food service, a slight uptick of $100,000. Facilities, the $66,000 category has not been utilized for many, many years, it was revamped in FY23 and continues in FY24, and that's where the construction projects will be paid out of, as well as the $2.1 million coming back in with the construction money. So you'll see in FY24, the facilities line is a little over $5 million. Debt service, we're seeing an increase of $9,000. We do see in the next couple of years some significant drop-off with the amortization schedule with debt service, which is good. And technology, a slight decrease of $100,000 in FY24, and again, we place some funds in FY23 due to potential impact of COVID through '23 for technology supplies. So what does all of this look like from kind of the 30,000-foot view? Total budget expenditures, existing budget with changes, I need to clarify what that means. As we navigate a fiscal year, we have ebb and flow with staff. We have some staff that leave, that come back, and we'll hire back at potentially a lower rate. There's some staff leaving at a lower rate that we sometimes have to hire back at a higher rate, depending on where they are on the salary scale. We'll also have some positions that we can eliminate based on student population, and we just don't have enough to sustain, and retirements obviously take care of some as well. So existing budget with changes is $61,774,859. We did see an increase of insurance of 6.2%. To take care of the employer share of that, the cost is $279,000. Workers' compensation, we did have some heavy hits come on for workers' compensation, so we'll see an uptick of cost with workers' comp of $48,000. 5% raise is a $1.9 million expenditure. Coaching supplement changes, we're looking at a 3% increase in coaching supplements throughout the division, and that would be $22,500, and debt service of $2.1 million brings our total budget expenditures to $66,235,203. Now, I do want to state this, working with our board, the board, the school board has given me two directives as the state budget moves forward, and again, we, I present this budget to you with the expectation it is not going to end like this. I feel confident that the state will flesh out a different budget, I think Mr. Utte feels the same. So the directive from my board... So the directive from my board is clear. If it comes through and there's a 7% raise, adjust the budget to where there's a 7% raise, across the board. Any remaining funds, look at the insurance and make sure that there's no budgetary impact to families with insurance cost, to make sure that this 6.2% increase does not impact their take-home pay. Again, we took care of the employer's share with, with the cost, but there is, there is an additional cost for the employee with, with the 6.2%. So my charge is clear. Adjust the salary to meet the 7% if approved, and to adjust the insurance to where there is no impact to families with an, with an insurance increase. All right. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Atkins?
On this page right here, I'm confused.
Go back.
Prior page, debt service. Prior page, debt service was $6,000 increase.
$9,000.
$9,000. Yet on the page it just showed, we showing that the increase in the basic budget was the $2 million. I don't understand.
No, that's your total budget expenditure. So if you look, in FY24, your total budget is 2.179, that's your total cost of debt service. So when you look at total budget expenditure...
So you didn't include that in your existing budget?
I did not, no sir. That will tie the person.
What was the rea, oh, okay, that was all tied personally.
Yeah, when you look at the budget with the school system, it's kind of unique. You have an operational budget and a debt service budget. We actually break it out in our budget book. So we, we looked at that from the operational side as opposed to debt service.
I didn't realize that existing budget did not include debt service. That's, I thought we was double dipping on debt service.
No, we, that would be very unethical, so we would not do that.
As long as you made payments. And you just paid off.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, cut debt service in half. But we did, and we did actually contemplate that, but we felt like debt service, the way our budget is approved and the way you approve us, that it needed to be a standalone.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If none, I have others.
Sure.
Sean, I have one quick one.
Go ahead, Chris.
How does the distant budget with the proposed changes improvements?
Yes, sir.
Vision us with our neighboring counties to compete for...
Salary-wise?
Correct.
Salary-wise.
With teachers.
Yes, sir. So beginning teacher salary, we'll, we'll actually hit, even with the 5% raise, we'll hit the $40,000 mark as beginning teacher salary. We are not as competitive at the beginning of the salary scale as we are at the end. Actually, the end of the salary scale with a 5% raise would put us at $69,195. With a 7% raise, we'll be at $70,500 at the top of the scale. The, the board is, along with your, your all support, has worked to reduce our, our steps. We were at 32 steps, now we're at 28. So teachers can actually, if they begin teaching year one, they finish out year 28, so 28, 29, 30, they can, with VRS, top out their top three years at the top of the salary scale, and it, it works out well with VRS to be able to retire 30 years later. But to answer your question, not as competitive at the bottom of the salary scale as the top, by any means.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dealing with teachers, with the decrease in the student, and I know...
Yes, sir.
I know just because you lose 20 students, you don't lose one classroom.
Yes, sir.
How's that worked out for you? Have you been able to reduce the number of teachers?
We have, yes, sir. And actually, in your areas, one, at the Atkins Elementary School, we were able to reduce one, one staff member there. The way we do that is, we try to handle that through attrition and retirements as opposed to, sometimes we have to shift teachers. We do have another area where we're shifting a teacher from one location to the other, but it's, we, there is such a teacher need, we haven't had to implement any type of reduction enforced policy due to student enrollment. We're shifting teachers around as, as they're needed.
Textbooks?
Yes, sir.
I noticed in our budget, we have a very small, is that fund where you collect and we hold it, and then you, when you start new series?
Yes, sir.
That's way down this year. I'm assuming no new science books?
No, new science books. This will be the second year in a row, second year in a row that we've held true to the exact same number. What we do, we purchase some dual enrollment textbooks through Virginia Highlands and Withfield Community for our dual enrollment classes at the high school. But as far as textbook adoption, the state has not come out with any type of new textbook adoption.
Remember, we used to be looking at 1.2 million, and our mystery's under 200,000.
It is, yeah. Oh, we have found though, like with our science materials, we can buy science materials for project-based learning as opposed to new curriculum. So that, that's worked well for us.
Anything in, in your budget, and I, maybe I should have caught you earlier and asked these questions. Anything in your budget, our after-school program, which has become so popular with a lot of parents, anything in your budget on that is at all funded out of our budget?
It's self, it's self-sustaining, my understanding, self-sustaining through your all support.
Almost, I mean, 85%.
Yes, sir.
But it's, it's getting kids in better shape.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the beauty of it.
Absolutely. Well, childcare is a major issue to, for parents to go to work.
It helps the parents, but it helps the kids, you know, homework.
Yeah, sure.
They come in the next day with their homework.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And two comments, one...
Yes, sir.
You commented in your photos there on the, on the Career Center...
Yes, sir.
You didn't pat yourself on the back, and I'm assuming it's still the case. In the state competition, our Career Center comes home with winners every year. We have a phenomenal program down there, and I just wanted to make sure people know that. Your electrical classes, your welding, so that, these, these kids are competing statewide.
Absolutely.
And they come home with the, with the ribbons.
Yes, sir.
And I love that.
Yes, sir.
And finally, Sean will be happy to know that you're gonna have to amend this budget, because I give him a hard time. I was telling him, once we adopt that, we will not amend.
I can blame it on Dr. Carter.
Now he can piggyback.
Blame it on me. The, the good thing is, Smith County's not the only group in this, this is a statewide issue with, with budget flux where we are.
Any other questions? Now's your chance to give it tomorrow, actually.
Absolutely.
I just want to add a comment to talk about the Career and Technical Center. Not only do they win awards, but literally graduate and start jobs the next day, so it's a huge resource for our workforce pipeline.
CNA, LPN, they, they have jobs before they, before they graduate, absolutely. You also have a state winner in a, in a, Mr. Widener's son, too. Yeah, so was recognized at the board, Sam. Yeah, so that was, nice to recognize him at the board meeting Monday night. Absolutely.
On the planning student population, is there, and I know it's sort of hard to, to know, but is there any kind of projections out there for the county as far as where we may be, like a five-year?
Yeah, you know, all of that, it's so fluid. Weldon Cooper's is the group that we use for any type of projection of enrollment. They do a great job helping us, helping us project any type of long range. Beyond a three-year projection is tough, just because of economics, if you have industry come in. I know you're, as a board, you're addressing the housing issue, and I'm thankful for that because houses bring families, families bring kids. So that's a great thing for Smith County. But it's, to be able to project beyond a two- to three-year period is so difficult. I know that, and I'll speak on behalf of West Poole Superintendent with County, they ended up with an increase in enrollment this year, and I'm sure it's due to industry growth in Withfield County. It was just an unexpected growth in Withfield County that they were not projecting, which is always welcomed, but due to economic growth in Withfield County.
And based on the, and based on the budget, is that usually done based on the number of kids the previous year?
No, that's a great question, yeah. So what happens is, is the Department of Education actually gives you numbers of projection for the next academic year. When you receive the biennial budget, they project what the next year's enrollment will be and the next year. So you get kind of two years out through the Department of Ed. We as a locality have the ability to adjust that number, and we drive that on lots of things. We drive that on looking at our existing population as well as our pre-K numbers, as well as, as well as our kindergarten numbers and kind of the trend analysis. For example, we've held pretty true at Choctaw High about 100 per grade level. You see a dip, there's, there's a dip for a couple of years, but it comes right back up. So we're, and I don't want to speak too much because I'll mess up, but we've done pretty well projecting year-to-year of what that number will be. And we never really agree with the state. The state's a little more aggressive in the cuts that they see, but we have landed pretty nicely on the, on our projections.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I will throw out that we're having the budget public hearings at the next meeting, and the school board budget will be part of those public hearings. So we'll see you next meeting, too.
And from tomorrow, and then the next day. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming. You don't have to leave, you can stay awhile. We are down to our intern creation?
Sure.
I'm gonna give just a quick little introduction while he walks up. So about a year or so ago, we were talking at Smith 12 about county-wide recreation opportunities or thoughts or concept, and the first thing that came to mind was, we don't know what all is out there to start with. So, and there was approach to us of a potential to, to have an intern from Virginia Tech and to start that, form that partnership again. I jumped on the, on the, on the potential, and Grayson stepped up and has put together a, a good inventory to start with. Let me get my camera set for his class.
Does, do each of you have either a paper copy or you have it up on a paper?
You have a great name for a consulting firm, like you just use in your regular name. You know, it's got a rank to it.
It's a little unique, yeah.
Grayson Schultz Consulting.
It's time for a photo, yeah. I agree. I'm a little biased, but yeah.
You're up in.
All right. Hit the clicker. And we'll try and move this.
The word's gonna be...
Well, first off, I just want to say thank you to all of you who are having out today, having me speak to you. I want to thank Sean and Clegg and everybody else in the Smith County government, being so welcoming to me and letting me come here and have the opportunity to learn so much about your beautiful county and your beautiful towns. It's really been a pleasure. But what I really want to talk to you about today is what I've been able to put together over the last few months. And so, yeah, let's get into it. See if I can make this work. All right, so first, I have these page numbers. I'm sorry for the audience that you do not have access to, to what they do, but you get a little, little taste of it. So the first thing I want to highlight is these map reviews, and I want to really shout out to Manuel Street for putting these together for me. But these are just highlighting for you the recreational sites in each one of your towns and the countywide. And so you'll see the page numbers, like I said, up there of what those are, and those precede what comes next, which is, on each of those pages, you'll find an aerial, an aerial view of each recreational site, and underneath that, the information included on each of these sites. These are some of the areas that Sean and I talked about as being some of the most important things to consider and look at, just as an overview for each one of the sites. So we've got included the address, an estimated area of each site, the zoning, if there's parking, and then some facility information. So amenities and equipment, I was, use my discretion to kind of see what would be considered amenities or equipment. For amenities, I kind of assumed they were like seating and general recreational areas. For equipment, I included things like the fields or actual sports equipment used for actual sports recreation. If there's restrooms at each one of these sites, my own personal evaluation of what, we're talking to Sean, of what I thought the upkeep would probably be for each one of these sites, and then one to two cents evaluation of each one of these sites. So you'll find that for all, I believe, 47 sites, give or take, and that is split up again over, over each one of your towns and the countywide. At the end, you'll find, I think this is on page 48, you'll find an inventory table of me essentially just adding up all of the recreational sites that you have throughout the county. So soccer fields, football, baseball fields, walking tracks, trails. And I think this gives you just a good overview of exactly what is out there and what you're putting together these sort of sports offerings, what you have available for you. And so now I'd like to go through some potential areas I see for improvement. Again, this is from just talking to Sean and Clegg about areas that I think, and we think, would be good areas for improvement. The first one, pull up my own version here, is the, I'm just gonna go through the list of what they are in the actual documents. The first one is the Marion Baptist Church. I thought there was a great area, or we thought there was a great area just to the left of it for new soccer fields. It's already flat, there's already grass there. You'll see on the actual page that I have an estimated cost, that's really just a ballpark estimate, pun intended, of, of, you know, just me doing my own research and just trying to find what that might cost. But again, you know, having an actual contractor out would be a good idea. But again, that just kind of gives you a rough estimate. But for the Marion Baptist Church, like I said, new soccer fields. If we move on to the Allison Gap Community Center, there is space, and I think there was at one time a baseball field across the street. And again, there's flat space in the back right behind it for potentially a new soccer field. Move on to the Ruertan Club, I think there was a baseball field there at one point, so it's already flat. This would need, though, of the sites we've looked at so far, the most major work, just for clearing, leveling, and really putting that baseball field there. So you'll see the cost there is quite a bit more expensive than these other areas. Moving on to Conor Rock, again, there is already a baseball field there. I know that there's, as you can see on these renderings, that there's a new one that Manuel actually laid out, but there is already a field there, so a little bit less cost on that, but another good spot, I think, for a new recreational site. And then finally, the Adwoal Fire Department, I think some of you might be familiar with that site. There's already a baseball field really there, so there's room for some cheaper improvement to making that field actually playable again. I know there's potentially an issue of ownership, but if that can be figured out, you know, I think that's a great area to improve and offer another baseball field. And the Adwoal Fire Department might be able to perform some of the upkeep, if they, they might also want to use it. Move on to, I want to get into now some of the, and you'll see this on the last couple of pages, I've laid out exactly what each town offers in terms of sports and contact information, seasons, that sort of thing. But I actually had the opportunity to talk to the programs coordinator with County. He's actually the son of my advisor at Virginia Tech. And what they do is, their county actually takes on a bit more of administrative role than I would say Smith County does. And I've sort of outlined what I thought the county could possibly step in and do a bit more of in terms of facilitating these sports for, you know, both kids and adults. And so with the county, you know, helping each town, I know there's already sort of booster club types, type things in each town, but helping each town establish their own dedicated booster clubs, handling these contractual agreements with these sites that you don't own, so these churches that you'll find in there, and handling those sorts of contractual agreements to actually play on their, on their sites, handling referees, handling the formation of play schedules, which I think can actually boost more cohesion and interplay between the towns. And then they actually handle major equipment at the county level, not at each town. So I know that might be sort of a budgetary thing to consider, but I think if the county were to facilitate that, that major equipment, that's, you know, essentially for like football, it would be pads or those sorts of things, I think it could, it could be better than each town taking care of it themselves. But what the towns would do, take on is the registration for each of these, fundraising, they would handle jerseys and uniforms, so some minor equipment, and then actually hiring and vetting coaches. And so what Withfield County also does, and I actually, I saw with some of the other counties that I was researching as a comparison, is that it's creating sort of some dedicated brochures that really just like outline sports that are offered, the seasons, it's offered pricing, info, age ranges, and maybe even handing these out at existing sporting events, just to really do some minor advertising for what is offered in each town and what, you know, from the county, just to see that, you know, that an administrative role has been taken on. And then for this document here, you know, I think this can really serve as a working document for all of you to use, and I think it also, if we work to be public facing, it could be added to the Smith County website for the citizens to use in order to see what is out there and what's being offered to them to use as public sites. So thank you to everyone again, I appreciate it. And I will take some questions now.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
This is not your report, just to see by chance you may know this.
Yeah.
I know the town Marion went to flag football this year, so my question is, because I know how much equipment costs, how much show pays, I just wondered what they did with the... I just wondered what they did with the equipment that they had for...
I don't know if they surplus it or if they still haven't, that didn't come up when we were doing the interviews.
I just wondered, because if they still have it, I mean, it can help before we go with this.
If you could recondition it or...
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe the county can start to take that on.
That's a great question. That's a great question.
Big, big experience, I can tell.
Such a football equipment.
It's a big concern, I think, with all the town residents to not having that protective football now, so. I, I just wanted to let you know, I, I looked through all this before I came in today, and I was pretty impressed.
Thank you.
I talked to you back here earlier, and like I said, looking at, looking at the overall numbers, you don't realize how many facilities you truly have.
Yeah, I was, I was genuinely surprised you counted them all up.
You know, one of the times you don't take into consideration, you know, a lot of the churches have these facilities that... Unless, unless you may be a, you know, a member or associated with the, with the church or something like that, you may not know if you're there.
Yeah, I think that's a great, I think that's a great opportunity.
They have some of the nicest facilities.
Exactly, some of the nicest basketball courts in the county, and I think that's, I mean, I think that's something that the county can help facilitate, is really getting some of those agreements together with them for them to use, the kids to use.
But thank you for, for coming this together and I thought that...
It's been a pleasure. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, no problem. Thank you all so much.
We're up to VDOT quarterly report.
Hello?
Can you make your shit through at all?
So, is, is this the public hearing part of it, or?
The quarterly report part.
Okay. The only thing I had to report on from the last meeting are the speed studies that was requested, and we've got four of them here. And the first was Route 630 Long Hollow Road, and the result of that study was no change in the speed limit. And I have a handout here that kind of explains what the criteria is for a speed, to warrant a speed study. It's based on accident data and also any new developments along the road. So there was no new developments in these areas, and also the accident data, just to kind of paraphrase this, you have to have, in order to warrant a speed study, change of speed, you have to have three or more accidents in the last three years. And none, actually, none of the four routes warranted a speed study. So they were Route 630 Long Hollow Road, Route 610 Valley Drive, Route 42 Bluegrass Trail, and Route 648 Old Mill Road. So I don't know if you have any questions about that. But it's, it's not a, an, having a residency review, it's a traffic engineering review, and it's, they, they follow the, the regulations pretty closely in order, because changing a speed could, could cause more problems sometimes than it helps. But, but I do have that from Mr. Utter if he wants a, a copy of the memorandum. And also, to start out with, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Resident Administrator, Chris Jackson, here tonight. He started in February. And Jeff Harrison, our resident administrator, would have been here tonight, but he had to attend a conference in Williamsburg, so he sent his regrets, but, so, we're here. And the rural, I mean, the Revenue Sharing Project, Evergreen Court, Green Acres, it is now, I think Mr. Utter signed the agreements, it is with the accounting division in central office, working up the financial part of the project, and we, the county should be getting those, an invoice for the project cost here fairly soon.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What, what would you anticipate, because that's right behind my house.
Uh huh.
They ask me all the time, just a ballpark, when do you think that project may start?
Oh goodness, because it, it depends, they will have to finish up the finance, the accounting part of it, send an invoice, and then those funds will have to be sent to VDOT, and they'll have to have it in the bank before they'll give us the green light to go. So I'm, it's just a, I would say, if, if we were to get those documents or the invoice in the next month, it could be two to three months before we could start, depending on when we get the check in Richmond. Because that too used to be a residency thing, we would get the check and start the work, but some policy changes a couple of years ago, so now it all goes through central office.
Under the risk, it's very exciting, this has been a long time coming down there, I can tell you.
Yeah.
High school guidance counselor lived right behind me, he passed away. My high school guidance counselor, and he, that was one of his, he really wanted that project. He died away last year, so I hate to see he's not here to see it, but thank you all for being there for the place.
And I guess that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
I have, I think everybody, everybody, I got, I got two complaints.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I left it in my chair, hold on. Okay.
I have two complaints. The, I don't know, once you did the Bear Creek Road. I don't know you, what you, you deemed that repaving or...
Slurry seal?
It, it was, whatever it was, was awful.
It was horrible in my district.
And if you was on a motorcycle, you left, you left some terrible gravel and everything else on a hard surface road. You'd be riding along, and all of a sudden here was gravel, I mean, it, it was a mess. I don't have, you, I, I've only been high on VDOT, but y'all got done with Bear Creek, you, you left a mess. And... No, I don't know who it was.
It was a company called Slurry Pavers.
Well, they, they were slurry all right. I mean, I just, nobody, nobody in particular has complained to me, other than, they'll just comment, oh, that road was awful. Okay, we got two back here, maybe that's why they're here tonight.
That's why the whole bird's here.
I mean, I just, I, I travel a little bit, I, I'm on Flow and Spring Road, and it was awful.
And, and it will get better, is that, as it...
It can't get much worse.
It takes twenty-eight days for it to cure, and what you're seeing is float. Once it, the float moves to the side, the road will be smoother, it'll be sealed, but with that kind of treatment, you're gonna have what they call float. Sometimes they'll put too much stone in it.
You're gonna make, I find it hard to make a believer out of me, because you do about a two-foot section up, snaking up the road, and then you expect that to, I'm sorry, but...
Well, and the, the, it's not over the whole thing, because I'd actually called several times and texted and messaged and tried to get it. It's, in my district on Riverside, at all the intersections, like the intersection of Matliff Road, Riverside, Thomas Ridge Road, and then at the intersection of Riverside and Redstone, there's just pockets of it. So it's just where the cars turn, and like Charlie said, I've had a couple folks on motorcycles call me and say, I'm just about, that I don't think that is gonna go in. Now, some of it has, but there's just, there's one area on Riverside around that eight-hundred block that literally looks like somebody dumped a, a whole truckload of it in the road, like it's just piled up there.
And that's what happens at an intersection a lot of times, is they give too much gravel on it, to try to give it time to cure while the traffic is...
Right.
Gets more wear.
Yeah.
I'll check, and we'll get back with you. Sometimes they put sweeping on these contracts, definitely not, we know what they do.
Well, if it was on there, I should assure you, they did not.
You gotta wait twenty-eight days before you get anything.
And you should get two, Bear Creek.
I'm trying to think what the other one was, but Bear Creek was what really had my attention. I'll get back at it, we got some others here to comment, so.
And we can write it, and we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Need more?
It is.
And that's not, that's just...
One of my students, I'm sure I threw it at you.
Yes.
Need more.
And Harris Lane is what this, this thing is here for.
Harris Lane?
And it has...
Oh, I have a story you have to follow to build up to the four layers that's on it now.
Yeah. I think that was...
Write it down so it'll be quick.
Can I start something about?
Do you mind if I can speak?
No, go ahead.
Come on up and tell us a story.
All right.
We'll, we'll be a little informal here.
You have to follow with me now, because there's some things in here. And first of all, we'd like to thank you for letting us come and speak to you. We appreciate it. This is the Harris Lane saga, as I call it. We were here in May of twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, last year, to complain about Harris Lane and Marion's paving. VDOT, and I feel like I should be talking to you all, VDOT had spread asphalt on the road and tried to spread it with a graver, and it made the road like a rumble strip on interstate. Also, Mr. Lewis used to be here, and we told him, and we also told him there was a speed limit sign that had been laying on the side of the road, and that needed to be put back up.
For a year.
Thank you there. One week later, June second and third of twenty-twenty-two, WNL came and paved what VDOT had messed up, and they did a fantastic job. This year, April sixth, twenty-twenty-three, three days before Easter, at six a.m., Slurry Paving Company was out in front of the house with twenty workers paving over what WNL had paved. And no joke, they were smoothing it out, not with a roller, but with a burlap sack on two boards.
That's what I threw up.
That's less than ten months since WNL had paved, and WNL, of course, did a great job. The next Monday, it was Easter, so we couldn't do anything over the weekend, we went to VDOT in Marion, and we ran into three guys, and we asked them why they were paving over what WNL had paved, and they said they didn't have a clue. It all comes out of the main office, and they said they didn't pave over what WNL had paved, and we said, yes, you did, you just need to go check it out. While we were there, we said, there's a speed limit sign that needs to, that's been laying on the side of the road for two years, and it needs to be put back up. Also, gravel needs to be put down where there's four layers of asphalt now, and the mailman and the paper man go in like this to deliver the mail. And when people run off the road, they can hardly get back on the road. The next day, VDOT came and put a lot of gravels down and picked up the speed limit sign and took it away, but we still don't have a speed limit sign.
Two years.
In the meantime, we contacted Ms. Lori Deal, and in her investigation, she has yet to get an answer as to why Harris Lane was paved over again after WNL had paved it. The road has four layers on it now, the original layer, what VDOT came and put down, what Mr. Atkins is talking about, WNL came back and straightened it out, now Slurry Company has gone back and messed it up again. All you hear now is a thump, 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 all the time with trucks and trailers. Our neighbors cringe when they see VDOT coming on our road now. There's other roads in the county that need to be paved worse than Harris Lane, Old Lake Road, West Chilhawee Street up to the corporate limits, Shell Bank Road, Boxwood Lane, Spring Valley Road, and that's my complaint. I hope you understood it, did it make sense?
I have, I have three questions, I'd like to ask VDOT, if I could, can I do?
Excuse me?
Can I, I have three or four questions to ask VDOT, can I do that?
Uh, wait down the meeting, unless you think it pertains to us too.
Okay.
I think you'll answer after. She shook her head yes. Go ahead.
David Thomas.
My question is Senator Onnick Interstate eighty-one, down specifically at the forty, the lower Marion exit, which I believe is forty-five.
That, that's the middle one, forty-four is south, forty-seven is north.
Yeah, it's the split one. And on the north and southbound lanes, there's been a series of crashes there, and one I know personally nearly lost his life, and he, he was not driving recklessly, but it lost control of the car. There's since been, I think, two semi-trailers crashed, and I think two people lost their lives there. And it's in that stretch between, and we'll, for the roundabouts, you're gonna go on the interstate section towards the Chilhawee. And I guess my question is, is VDOT, is it on VDOT's radar to take a look at the apparent safety issue?
And I don't, we don't cover the interstate, but I will say, yes, anytime we have accidents like that, we do investigate them.
Yeah, there's, there's somebody with some kind of a degree needs to look at it and figure out why the crashes are being concentrated in that particular stretch of I- eighty-one. Now, we expect it further up the road towards the, the sharp bend on the top Marion exit, but on that lower end, it's, it's creeping up on people.
But when we have clusters like that, our traffic engineering division usually reviews those.
That, that's ultimately my ask, is if you could take it back and have someone try to put eyes on this data and figure out why all of a sudden we're having crashes in that area. Thank you, sir.
I can actually answer that, because I just spoke to Matthew Lewis, who was here in this road before, but now he's over the interstate after the tractor trailer crash on eighty-one that you referred to. He's since been in contact with Virginia State Police and has the crash data, and there's, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's specific eighty-one funding that's used for guard rail and projects and different things like that, so he is already on top of that, with crash data and getting funding and trying to add that guard rail, so.
So they're gonna, they're gonna add barriers rather than adjusting the, the line of the pavement in some fashion?
I'm, I don't know one way or the other, but they're, they're investigating to see what will work. I do think a section of that, especially where the tractor trailer crash was, it needs guard rail, but it's very expensive, so, but that is...
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And I know this, something that's been going on for some time, and I was just wanting to bring up, for the record, Flint Lane. We've had some discussions. You've been in contact with Mr. Williams on, just so we're aware, there, the state had acquired this property on Flint Lane back in nineteen fifty-three, correct?
Yes.
And in nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three, somewhere around in there, there was a resolution to return this property back to the property, correct?
The resolution allowed property owners along that project, that, that section of Route eleven, to request the, some of that right-of-way be returned to them. A majority of them did, but for whatever reason, the property owners in, in the vicinity of Flint Lane did not request, so it was never needed back to them. So there is a deep right-of-way, right?
So, so now the right-of-way is for the residents, or, or you're saying, I mean, technically, VDOT owns that up to the...
Yes, I think it's, it goes to, looking at the plan sheet, like almost seventy feet from the center line, in some ways.
Right, okay. So I was just, you know, curious, I've, I've talked to two citizens within the last two days, one who lives on Flint Lane and one who, who else, who really doesn't have any interest in that property. But one of them has, the one who does not live in Flint Lane says that they have seen the state filing that road. And my, my question is, and I've got, I've, I've got other citizens who live on the road that say, they've been filing this road and they have spread asphalt on this road, that's why the asphalt is there. So I, I guess my question is, and I understand the rural edition, we can look at that and everything, but up to this point, I, I don't know that there would be any records or anything that, that you all may have, but if VDOT is, or has maintained that road at any point now, are they not required to continue to do so?
Well, I spoke to the superintendent, and he's been there over twenty-five years, or been with VDOT for over twenty-five years, but he said, they have not, as long as he's been with VDOT, they have not maintained that road. And when he first started, he was told by the previous superintendent that it was not a VDOT maintained road.
Right.
So I, I can't really speak about somebody saying it, plowing it.
But, but, so, you know, I, I, these are constituents of mine, and, and I, I trust what they're telling me is the truth. They, they've seen VDOT out there doing work, so I don't know if there's any other way, maybe to see if there's some kind of record of...
We do not have any records for who they might, I mean, if the snow was pushed, I mean, we, you know, they, they push a lot of routes whenever, the, each, each area headquarters has so many routes.
Right.
And they, we get complaints all the time because they're not pushing the ones that are in the state.
Right.
Not state maintained, but, and so we, we don't really keep records of every winter, you know, where we would have pushed snow, but, you know, that superintendent has said that he, he knew from the very beginning it was not a state maintained road. Because a lot of people call and ask for you to kind of push their road, whether it's state maintained or not.
Right, yeah, and, and I think the, the biggest concern here is too, and, and one of these gentlemen live on this road, they, they have... of these, uh, gentlemen who live on this road, they, they have a major concern because he's saying that VDOT actually paved the road, um, and this would have been, in my assumption, uh, around 20, he, he says since 2000 or just before 2000, he knows. So I would think if there was some kind of asphalt work done, that there would be some kind of record somewhere stating that.
And, um, he says around 2000 or around 4000?
He, he said, um, hang on, Mr. Say. Well, he, he, he's, he told me that they had been plowing the snow since before 2000, but that they had, uh, uh, spread out and rolled the asphalt, um, I, I would assume during that date. And I'm sure he probably don't have the exact date, but, but I, I just, like I said, I, I don't know if it would.
And I can, I, I'll check the records and see.
Be a possibility to check and see.
If they have any patching, but I can tell you that Flint Lane is not maintained, it's at, we look at it as a long driveway that accesses, I think if I counted this morning, seven houses, but there's like a business, seven houses and then a, I think it's a heating, a plumbing and heating.
No, there's apartments in it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think total is ten, um, but, um, I, I, I don't want to keep you on this, I, I know this is something we've discussed, we've been through this, uh, um, as Mr. Utz had said previously, that since he's been here, this has been something. And, and I think just for my constituents, you know, we need to try to come up with some kind of resolution to this and, and, you know, make, make sure that, uh, we, we got a good understanding of, well, I think we do now, but VDOT owns it, I mean, I think that was the first major step, so.
We, we have lots of driveways, there's, in, all over the state, there are some access roads that belong to like either private or even some commercial businesses, but we don't maintain them. They're either private entrances or, or like a, a road into a shopping center or something. Those are either privately maintained or maintained by the commercial business. Um, but this can be brought into the system if, if the county would like to pursue that. And because the right of way is so wide there, what you would normal, the, the requirements of like the, um, out in the county, a, a private road, uh, we, the right of way is there, you don't have to worry about that. And we know there's been, in existence, or it's been a public road for 20 years or more, so those two criteria are met, so it would just be, uh, the road work, uh, and, uh, we'd have to do an estimate, we'd have to, we don't, we don't have one tonight, but we'd create an estimate for what it would cost to, uh, make those road improvements, uh, to bring it up to state standards.
Would this follow the same process as Evergreen Corp. and?
Yes, uh, and if you wanted to pursue revenue sharing, then you, just like Evergreen Corp., you would apply for it in a smart portal for the revenue sharing program. And then that would cover, if, if it were approved, it would cover 50% of the cost.
All right, and thank you for staying in contact with us on that.
You're, you're welcome. Actually, after we had that meeting up here, uh, I reached out to central office and they started looking through documents and they started in 1953 with the project and worked their way down and found it in 1983, that the Board of Supervisors Resolution. So they really, I mean, they, they looked through a lot of documents, they did a lot of research, they had a team on it and that's what they, they found.
Well, and, and my, my home sits on Route 11, just down from there, and my property was acquired back during, during that time. And so that's, that's where we never could figure out, well, you know, if it was acquired back, then there would have to be a deed associated with it.
And it's interesting that the ones that, with the wide right of way, they just never came to VDOT to ask for it to be returned.
Thank you.
Which brings to mind, I don't know if you're involved, the Glade Mountain Road, are you involved with that at all?
It's not ringing any bells, I don't know, do you, no, what did?
It'll ring a bell when you figure it out. It'll ring a bell once you get, get the mention on it.
Better than Flint Lane.
Yes.
Glade Mountain?
And I'd, I'd be glad to sit down with you one-on-one if you'd like.
Okay.
Give you a history.
That's fine, I just, nobody's clamoring right now too much, it's one of these hot and cold, hot and cold.
But I think since we have some new staff, it might be good.
Yeah, I'm bringing up today to that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go into our six-year plan and if, uh, get someone to read the public notice, I guess while opening the public hearing before.
Okay.
Six-year plan.
So notice of public hearing for six-year VDOT plan by Smith County, Virginia. The Virginia Department of Transportation and Board Supervisors of Smith County in accordance with Section 33.1-70.01 of Dakota, Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing in the board meeting room of the Smith County Government Center Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, 24354, 5:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as possible on May 11th, 2023. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2023, '24 through 2028, '29 in Smith County and on the secondary construction budget for fiscal year 2023, '24. Props of the proposed plan and budget may be reviewed by contacting the inhabited residency office of the Virginia Department of Transportation at 276-676-5582 or at the Smith County offices located at 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, 25, 24354. All projects in the Smith secondary six-year plan are eligible for federal funds, will, will be included in a statewide transportation improvement plan, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds in compliance with the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this public hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator at 276-706-8315, at least 24 hours prior to the public hearing by order of Smith County Board Supervisors, Sean, and County Administrator.
All right, thank you. Uh, you want to get a quick overview?
Yes, thank you. Um, this year, uh, Smith County was given $170,306 for the fiscal year 29 allocation. Um, after funding or completely funding some existing projects, that left $132,920 to be used on a new route and the county, uh, proposed Route 676, Old Brunswick Road, um, to be brought in or to be, uh, improved. And it goes from Route 676 to 0.52 miles, uh, past, uh, uh, 676 connection and it's, um, uh, I think that'll take most of the $132,920. So that, that's what's been proposed to add, be added to the six-year improvement program, Old Brunswick Lane.
We have anybody to sign up?
Anyone here wishing to speak on this issue? Anyone here on the board have any questions or need clarification or anything like that? We can't have this.
[laughing]
All right, here you go.
If it's appropriate, if the board feels fine, it might be worth waiving the rules and go ahead, but not the resolution in the package.
I'll make the question, waiving rules?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the rules, all the papers, but waiving the rules, see if I would say no?
I.
And you oppose likewise. Okay, we're waiving the rules. The resolution is in the package, anybody want to read that? Or do you just want to adopt it?
To approve the resolution.
A second.
Have a motion to approve and a second? Any other discussion? Here you go, I guess we have, way it's presented there, we'll do a roll call of options.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson is absent, Dr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Ms. Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Sounds like it's unanimous. So we have an adoption of the six-year plan?
Thank you.
Something can change.
I, uh, have copies for, uh, Mr. Atkins signing, also a copy of that big picture claim that shows. And, uh, Mr. Harrison will sign those when he, he'll return on, on Monday to the office. Thank you.
Thank you a lot, nice to meet you.
Good to have you with us.
Thanks.
You'll be getting our calls.
He'll be getting your phone number.
He's a little too new to have cards yet, so.
Trust me, I got a card.
Are you, I, I'm being nosy now, are you local or are you in here from?
I grew up over near Grand, and I've been with VDOT long enough to move toward Charlottesville and make my way back now to try to retire in the year, so.
What part of Grand?
Uh, the council area.
I'm from Bensan.
Well, my address where I grew was Bensan.
Yep.
Good to have you onboard.
Good to be here.
Been at Council High School?
Yes, sir.
Few times. Couple ballgames. All right. Minutes of the, oh, okay, nuisance. I am going to, uh, step out of the room on this next one, the nuisance complaint by Ralph and, uh, complaint Ralph and Joyce Cheeks, I'm going to turn the gallows over to, uh, Lori.
All right.
So.
Where are you going?
I'm going to. I'll get you the mail.
All yours.
All right, thank you, good evening. So the first nuisance complaint we have tonight, um, came in, uh, in February, this is for the Ralph and Joyce Cheeks property, address is 276 Perry Lane. Um, in response to that complaint, I sent, as required by the ordinance, a first-class letter, um, to the Cheeks, um, receiving no response, I sent a second certified mailing. The second one, uh, they did respond, they actually have submitted a plan of action, um, and they're effectively asking, um, for 120 days to either demo the structure or to secure it. So board up the doors, the doors and windows, uh, and remove all of the debris from the property. Um, I don't believe that they are here tonight, hopefully you have pictures in your, um, pocket. Uh, we did decide there's been no change as of yesterday. Um, it is my recommendation, since this did require a second letter, um, and the scheduling of this public hearing and there's been no change, uh, that it, that you all do declare a public nuisance, um, and that you do allow him the 120 days that he's asked for in his plan of action, and then if he does not do that, that you authorize the county attorney to proceed with legal action.
Anybody sign?
No one's, no one's signed it.
So if, if they board up the windows and doors and the roof, I mean, they can just leave it there from that point forward?
Effectively. I mean, because the argument could be made it's no longer a public nuisance. Um, if, if, you know.
That's what we made to say.
Yeah, access is denied, uh, the debris is removed, so there shouldn't be any fear of it continuing to degrade, uh, pieces and parts going all over the neighborhood. Um, so those are kind of the two options that, that we discussed.
Security from squatters.
Squatters, yep.
And vegetative overgrowth?
So that's something that comes up all the time, we do not have, um, we do not have an ordinance in the county that regulates vegetation. As long as somebody else enforce it.
I don't think some of the neighbors would have, would settle for that from my conversations with them.
I, I just, we are just referring to the, uh, Perry Lane on this.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want to comment, answer a question? No one's.
No one's signed it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of signify by saying aye? Any post same sign? Motion carries. Our next motion would be to, to declare the public nuisance.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, included in that motion?
120 days.
To give them 120 days and if they do not, to authorize the county attorney.
Now, just to clarify, the 120 days for progress or 120 days to be completed?
No, complete, yes.
And can we put stipulations on the progress, meaning, I'm not comfortable with just boarding it up.
So I guess we would need to decide, yes, what, what would be considered properly abating the nuisance?
You said can't speak about the, say vegetation?
Vegetation is, is off the table without a vegetation ordinance typically.
I have those two options, to board it up or clean it up?
Historically, that's, that's the two options. And, and I will, I don't know if this helps, but I will tell you that he is trying to find a contractor to demolish it, um, but he's not convinced he will find one or be able to hold one.
Is it 120 days?
Sorry?
120 days?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's the only way out legally, with the options that they have, no vegetation rules. I've approached that before on some asphalt with, you can't force them to mow their yard.
Can, can a, uh, another nuisance be filed just on the property being boarded up? Is there something?
Well, if, I mean, in theory, not a plaintiff be filed, but it'd be up to you all to determine if it, if that constitutes a public nuisance. And you have to keep in mind that the definition of public nuisance, I mean, it has to create an unsafe condition for the general public. And so generally, the argument is made that if it is boarded up, access is denied and it's not continuing to degrade and create a, I mean, we've had situations where, where the homes were not secured and we had pieces and parts going in the road and everywhere.
Safety tanks open?
Right, so if it doesn't, if, if it's abated to the point to where it's not a threat to the general public, I would say that, that they comply.
For the time?
Chairman, I was just hoping that.
Sure, go right ahead.
Once again, Clay has proven to be the best attorney in the room, uh, but I think he's right on this point, that, uh, a boarded up, secured building, typically a court would not find that to be a public nuisance. Uh, now, if that fails, right, and, and people break into it or, or something down the road happens after the fact, it could later become a public nuisance and we can revisit the issue. But if it's secured and boarded up, that alone typically is not enough to warrant a, a designation as a public nuisance.
And, and the reason, the only reason I, I was asking that was just, just from the couple pictures I see here, I didn't see like a whole lot of debris just from this. Is, is there?
There, there is some, I mean, it's, it's more visible in the winter when vegetation is down, um, not that things have greened up, it's, it's less obvious. Um, so, but he is willing to remove it, so.
Are taxes on this property?
That's a good question, I'll have to check on that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to declare a public nuisance and?
120 days, uh, completion of securing residence and.
You're still good with that second, Mr. Callen?
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Terms and effect for the next second. We will close the public hearing for, um, Perry Lane.
Is it a nuisance?
Yes, this one's the second.
So, um, the next complaint that I received, um, similar timeframe, uh, it was filed in January, uh, this was a nuisance complaint, uh, against 118 Old 11 Road, property owners are echoing Johnny Dow. Um, again, we, we sent this standard first-class letter asking them to respond and file a plan of action, uh, after no response, there was a second certified letter that went out. Um, they did respond, um, had a conversation, I believe, with Ms. Dow yesterday?
Yes.
Is that correct? Um, and before she called, we had actually sent one of our inspectors out to take up-to-date pictures, uh, and that's what is in front of you right now. Um, so if you compare those to the pictures that were taken in January, you will note that, that there have been improvements. Um, so is it, is it perfect as of yesterday? Um, I would imagine some would argue that it's not perfect, um, and so I kind of was preparing today to come in and, and sort of give you the same recommendation for this one, uh, and that was to, to declare the public nuisance and to order them to clean it up or file a plan of action or to finish the job and, and file a plan of action. So they're actually here today and I would actually like to, at this point, invite, um, Ms. Dow up because I think they've been busy yesterday and today, um, and they weren't able to get these pictures submitted to me, but I think she would like the opportunity to, to show you some, some pictures, uh, that were taken today of the property. Uh, I had a chance to see them just a few minutes ago and I'd say that there is substantial improvement now on property. So I'll turn it over to you.
I just had the same agreement. The only thing I have to say about the first letter is the way it was actually written, um, we, I, we were actually in the process of cleaning up, the reason I have an action plan. My husband just had a triple bypass surgery, open heart surgery, I need two new knees. Won't lie about it, not trying to make excuses, life happens. Won't lie about it, not trying to make excuses, life happens. It got out of control, something had to go. At that time, it was the trash, unfortunately. We didn't have a vehicle to take it off. Everything just seemed to capella one time. When we first got the first letter, I was concerned, of course, because I don't like to live in this situation either. We started cleaning it up then, and I knew it was a problem issue then, but like I said, things, it just happened. As we started cleaning up, I didn't realize how, I just read the first letter, was thinking, we're cleaning it up. I just didn't think it was that forward important. I knew we were cleaning it, I knew we got the letter, I knew it needed to be addressed, it was being addressed, we were cleaning it. With the second set, you can say it's a little bit cleaner. Like I said, it takes a while to get around and do things. This is our pictures as of today. You'll show the, on the porch, the two items that were left and the little bit of stuff around the porch were cleaned up as of today. And this morning. So like I said, this is actually new for me. I've never actually had to do anything like this. Being a citizen. Leaving it, you have to excuse me, leaving it grown up in this community. Having a neighbor not call or check on you or ask if you're okay. And just find the complaint. Got me by surprise. I will... I just think there could be maybe a little easier way to handle this instead of like straightforward slapping a face is kind of like what I felt. I'm not saying that maybe we can look into addressing. I know another county close to us, as a matter of Washington County, has an advisor who works, I believe, with the town and zoning that has a position that actually goes out and talks to people when this issue happens two or three times before they actually have to come and forward to the board. So I thought maybe that would be a good idea for this community. If y'all would take that into consideration. Somehow to address people's issues, maybe a little more peacefully and personally instead of letters just very forward, so. But I hope you can look at these pictures and see that we, we do take our community seriously. My children went to school, they all grown up, they're working, living here. Like I said, right now, I'm not able to work. My husband, he's on disability. So it just, it takes us a little while to get things done, but as you can see, we do get things done. Now, I won't lie, there is a little bit more work to be done, and I understand that. Because like I said, when he went through his heart surgery and his rehabilitation and all that stuff, I just had no, no way to do anything. It was just, I was all about him. And like I said, just now that he's gotten a little bit better and I can do as much as I can do, I only can ask that I can do what I can. And if y'all take that into consideration, I appreciate it, and I thank y'all.
I'll say something.
You ready, Chairman?
This isn't my district, and also, you know, for what it is, I mean, you know, it's very rare that I've seen already that you have somebody actually put in the time and effort to get things done.
Well, I appreciate that.
So, you know, I think it's a significant improvement myself, and, you know, I just want to commend you for for making the effort and doing what you need to do for coming here tonight and actually being there.
Yes, well, you're more than welcome. Like I said, we really do care, and it took us by surprise, but yeah.
And there are, as you've said, there are further plans to continue.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But because, just look at the older pictures.
Yes.
The rear of the residence, I can't really see anything. Do you have...
It does have, it does have some overgrowth, and I do have a few like building materials out in the back. But we had a, we had a tree fall on our house, honestly, four years ago, and it laid there for...
It fell in 2017?
2017, and it laid there probably two or three years because it's very expensive. Him being on disability and me being not be able to work at the moment, we're on a limited income. And we finally got enough money last year to get the tree off the house. So, yeah, it's just kind of like just spending one thing after another.
So just one other question.
Yes.
These pictures we have on here from April the 11th, and then almost a month later, it does appear that there's been some improvement. So I do, I do feel that there has been significant improvements made over this period of time. Was this the first, the April the 11th, 23 that we have? Was that the first?
There probably was some pictures from January. I don't know if you have those.
We don't have January.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Well, and the reason, the reason I was, I was asking, because, you know, I just, I was hoping you wouldn't wait until the last minute to do it.
Yes.
And was working on this a little bit.
Yes.
It seems like you've had a lot to do.
Yes.
Do you have somebody helping you with it, or is it...
Well, my children, my boys can help when they can, when they're not working or doing their own job or life.
Well, I want to commend you again just for getting things to work. And I think with everything that's going on, it's like, I think you've done a tremendous job and just continue to do what you're doing.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry. I didn't see you come back. No, I think you've done a great job too. But you don't get upset about it. We'll work it out.
Yeah.
But I would suggest that instead of saying this or or, let Mr. Williams run out maybe 120 days looking over it. Eight, you know, continue to clean up, we can approach it then. We just tape it for 120 days and look at it again? Yeah, yeah. Oh, I think they've done a lot of work.
No, they have.
Or not gonna do it.
That should be sufficient enough time for you to get done what you need to do.
Well, I mean, I'm not quite sure what else. The tree of the, from what I understand under the ordinance, I looked up the nuisance, and it was just pretty much dating the debris in the yard and trash. So all of that has been cleaned up now. Like I said, the only thing there may be like an outside table now with these, the new picture, so...
And I'm just basing that off of you saying that you still got some stuff to do.
Yeah, oh, yes, 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 yeah. Well, there's always stuff to do, for sure.
What it looks like.
Okay. Well, that's what I was just curious about.
Yeah, how about, how about throw this out? How about your table to the next board meeting? I'll go out between now and then, take some up-to-date pictures, and then file a report next, next meeting.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be busy as one on a paper here next meeting. Can we go two meetings?
That's fine.
Can we go to...
Yeah. Take it to July?
Yes.
Yep, that's fine.
I mean, I don't mean disrespect by that, but we're gonna be budget and everything else.
So the regular meeting in July?
Yeah.
Thank you for your, I mean, this is the first, I've been on this board for four years, and this is your first person to ever make this look practical.
Yeah, and if I may, I would like to take this opportunity, it's rare that I actually get to talk to somebody that I send letters to. So it's very cool that she's shown up.
Without knowledge.
Exactly, yes. And... So I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
You're our new model citizen for... That's why our letters have to be harsh, because some people take it seriously.
Okay, well, I, like I said, when I read the first letter, it was... Oh, hang on, I'm sorry, it's just, um... I may not even have that first letter here. It says, um, please contact me to discuss your plans on how you can play with the county's ordinance. Well, I just thought, you know, since we're already done it, I didn't, with the first letter, but then when I got the second letter, I was like, yeah.
Thank you, well, we appreciate you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time. Did you say anything?
No. You done a good job.
All right, we're up to the minutes of the previous meeting. Move to approve.
Did you table that?
We just tabled it. I don't think we need to vote on table, do we? We have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. And we have a second. We have a couple corrections. Dramatic corrections, so... Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sound like you handle this. Financial status report, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the red tab on your additional binder there, you have the county expenses and appropriations ending April 30, 2023. The bank balance at that time was $25,67,265.95. Just reviewing that compared to last year, that's about 1.9, close to 1.9 million more than what we had in the previous year. In addition to that, there is treasurer's accountability report. And you have the expenditure and revenue summary there as well, your back end.
1.6 million.
Yeah, on the back page of that.
That's just for this year. Collectively, it's 2.4 million.
Uncollected county taxes through, from 2002 to 2021 is 2.4 million as we mentioned. And then the, or the year 2022, there's 1.676 uncollected county taxes.
Out of that, I think that's, that represents about $17 million bill. And we've collected all of the 1.6 million, a little over 90 percent.
That's all I have.
All righty. Moving along. Trying to find my place again. Citizens time. Does a citizen want to speak?
How was your next time, did you just time?
All righty. I'll open and close citizens' time then. Old business. Budget committee. Could you handle that?
Absolutely. So you'll have it, attachment seven, page 98 in your packet. Budget committee did hold a meeting on May 4th. We just had a few items to discuss. The first one being amendment, budget amendment number 12 in the amount of $2.9 million. A lot of that being related to school board projects and their ESER fund. Motion was made by Ms. Deal to recommend scheduling the public hearing for May 25th, board meeting. And Mr. Sturgill's taken the motion passed unanimously. The reason that we needed the public hearing is because it was exceeded in excess of 1 percent of their budget. I will say that since the budget committee meeting, we do need to add one more item to that amendment while we're at it for the public radio system, since we've closed on that bond. We have those funds in place, and we have a bill that will be due June 3rd that will need to be added. It's right at $1 million, so we'll be looking at about a $4 million budget amendment. But the funds are all accounted for. But that does, that is a recommendation from your budget committee to hold a public hearing at the May 25th meeting.
Okay, do we need to, the committee has recommended we hold a public hearing for $2.9 million. Do we need to vote that down and vote for the...
I would recommend it's $4 million, and I can get the exact number if you want that real quick for the, for the public hearing. But, or you can, if you vote this down, you can do a public hearing to include 2.6 million plus the amount equal to the payment that's due June 3rd.
Everybody understand what we're gonna do there?
I'd say, yeah, vote this one down.
Okay, it's a committee recommendation, which we don't want anymore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're in favor of it?
Nay.
Sorry, nay.
All those opposed signify by saying aye. Sounds like a motion didn't carry. Now entertain the motion. See when we make the motion.
Give it.
You go first, because clearly my brain's not working.
To make the motion that we approve the budget amendment that...
Hold a public hearing.
Hold a public hearing for whatever the first payment is for the radios.
Plus the 2.9 million.
Plus the 2.936 million dollars.
It's the public radio, the radio payment is $1,033,000.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion to second, to hold a public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You don't want to vote against this?
No, I don't.
All right.
Sorry for the confusion there, but the next item we talked about, we've spoken in the, in the past about the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority project that we've been, the Smith County's been asked to serve as fiscal agent along with, as partnership with Mount Rogers Community Services. The budget committee did review the cooperative agreement that basically formalized that, that partnership with, with County Bland, Carroll, Grayson, City of Galaxia, and Mount Rogers Community Services. Following the discussion, a motion was made by Ms. Deal to recommend approving the cooperative agreement and to give the county administrator the authorization to sign and execute the agreement. Mr. Sturgill's taken the motion that was unanimously approved, so that is a recommendation from the committee and a copy of that cooperative agreement's in your packet.
Okay, committee recommendation. Have any, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
That's all the budget committee had.
All right, moving on to the Public Safety Committee now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's actually the chair of that meeting, but I'm gonna invite Mr. Crawford up to give that presentation.
All right, Public Safety Committee met on May 4th at 11:00 a.m. All members were present, along with staff and our special guest from the newspaper. Meeting was called to order, and then we discussed the first week of operations as we assumed EMS operations in Sawville. It was going, it has gone very well. The crew has been very strong and very willing to work with us. And we continue to work at the back end to make everything moving forward. I did give you statistics on our EMS. They should be at your desk. It should be broke down for both stations. You have a year-to-date for the Atkins station. You actually have a year-to-date for the Sawville station too. Last week, we ran 24 calls. We had to turn one over to Chilhali because two calls came out at the same time. We've been 100 percent, 100 percent ALS through the both stations this whole year, so. A strong, strong week for our first week over there.
And that's 24/7.
24/7, that's correct. Mr. Up also stated that the building needed repairs and upgrades with an estimated cost of $150,000 or more and to make sure that we, things are done right, since it will be a long-term investment, we'll be over there for a while. Mr. Up said that he recently spoke with Mr. Martin with the town of Sawville, and he proposed that the county forgive the remaining $64,000 balance of the loan that Sawville EMS had in return for the building, thus making the town of Sawville no further, with no further obligations on the loan. And then they discussed. After further discussion, Mr. Sturgill made the motion to recommend authorizing the forgiveness of the remaining balance of the loan to the town of Sawville in the amount of $64,000 in exchange for transfer of the property and building. Mr. Widener second, and it was unanimously approved.
Okay, it's committee recommendation, any discussion?
I will say, just to throw out to, we said it at the Public Safety Committee, but to make sure the rest of the board knows, I would estimate maybe $40,000, $50,000 of equipment that was purchased came to us through the, through the vehicles. So we're not really losing a whole lot of that $64,000. We would have had to buy a lot of that anyway.
Correct. So we've obtained three trucks. There'll be a fourth one coming. One of them was the truck that we purchased for the wash. One was an emergency grant, a very nice Horton, it's a 2021. As well as five monitors, some that were on grant, which equal about 30 to $40,000 apiece, as well as some their staff or their regular equipment too, so we're definitely, we're only up on that.
And we did not take ownership of the trucks that were...
Kind of less.
That's correct.
I'm just making, I keep asking that, but I'm just making sure.
That's correct.
The value of the building, what was the building that we're assuming?
The assessed value is, I want to say 258. We can look it up. 200 plus or minus.
So you took possession of the building itself?
We have an MOU to occupy the building right now. We have an MOU to, to occupy the building right now, and the, the proposal from Mr. Martin is if the county board was to waive or forgive that 64,000, the town would work through finalizing ownership because they still have to work through the Sawville Rescue Incorporated transfer also. So basically their responsibility would be to get that ownership to the county's name and, and be done.
I would suggest we spend a few dollars to make sure we get a title search done, so that we do get a clean deed for that property, there's been enough
Agreed.
And the town was, the town had done some of that, I will say Ryan Comer has been working that, that's how they found out that the the deed was not fully in the town at that point, so some of that has been done and we can do further.
I think we make sure it all is T's across and I's dotted and it aren't, you know, wouldn't be ours without any liens or anything else setting against it.
Right, 130, 126.
We also plan a lot of work on that too.
Correct, yeah, he was there.
Several years ago when I was on the board, the town probably helped and found out that they wouldn't
Probably just a matter of updating, but I think it's very important we update.
Correct.
He actually said that if you, if Sawville volunteer rescue went out, that it would have to be donated to whoever took over the services there, if it were 501(c)(3). They would, you had to donate it to a like entity, so whatever went out.
So about 210. Yeah. And that's, that's the way we've been treated is that since we're a like entity moving in, that's the, that's where we're moved towards.
Yeah, it would take, we found out that it would take a corridor judge to not give it to them, so that's the way that 401 works for by law.
Alright, so we have a motion from the board committee to to forgive the remaining debt for the building and equipment, any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, I believe it was unanimous, and motion passes.
Okay, I was actually virtual for this meeting, I was at the training center with Mr. Sean, Sean Talmadge, who is the state coordinator for the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and he had met with us that day, discussed our program. We're one of the fastest growing programs in southwest Virginia, he also wanted to discuss some of the Hurley and Buchanan County flood where we had people respond from, from my department and also from Chilhawee that responded over to help them out and presented us with some, some nice, excellent awards for that too, so he stuck his head on the call and said hello. And since then, he has also talked to us about meeting with Sean, some of his execs at the department, meeting with Sean and being a champion for emergency services in other counties around us in like size, so they're very impressed with what we're doing. Then we also discussed three potential items that go in front of the ordinance committee. The first one talks about the dictating of fire coverage in unincorporated areas. The three towns have theirs already written out in code, we do not have that for the county. And per Title 27 of the code, it is, is for us to, we're the ones that are the age J to do that. The second one is hazmat coverage regarding, or hazmat coverage regarding statements about how we can bill for that and that we would recoup funds for that. Also, Virginia Code 27 chiefs have the ability to, to control the scenes. If this ordinance would give us a chance to ordain, well, I don't want to say ordain, appoint chiefs for the county that would have that Title 27 ability. After the discussion, Mr. Widener made the motion to recommend sending it to the ordinance committee. After further discussion, Mr. Sturgill recommend, or seconded it, and it was unanimously approved.
We don't need to vote on that, do we?
Send it to the ordinance committee?
It's our own committees.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't put on the ordinance committee yet.
Okay.
You can go ahead and vote just for the last thing if you want.
Alrighty, any discussion on that? Hearing done, all those for sending it to the committees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here you go.
Alright, then Mr. Crawford discussed and answered questions, bringing to the county's EOP, the Emergency Operations Plan, and advised that it is ready to move forward to be ratified, we introduced it last month, and so we brought it back in front of the committee this month. Ms. Deal had some changes, which is, I applaud her for reading through that and finding those changes. And we have notated the changes for us and have, have that corrected. So Mr. Sturgill made the recommendation to adopt the EOP as amended, and the, and Mr. Widener also seconded, and it was unanimously approved.
Alright, everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Everybody, everybody read it?
Anybody else read it?
If you did, you didn't have a sleepless night, that's for sure.
Yeah.
197.
Although, okay, any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of adopting the plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous.
Alright, and then we'll, we'll present that to VDM to let them know that we've updated our plan. Then we discussed the two resolutions that would be considered tonight that we have done at the beginning of the meeting. And we did make the recommendation, Mr. Sturgill made the recommendation to present those EMS all resolutions, seconded by Mr. Widener, and that was unanimous. I don't know if you need to vote for that since we've already done it. After that, Mr. Sturgill stated that he would like to see EMS coverage for the graduations, especially Norfolk graduation, which will be May 19th, and that we will definitely get a truck out there to get that covered. Our next public safety committee meeting will be Thursday, June 1st at 11 here. And again, I advise that I get the statistics out for the EMS since I didn't have them that day and we did present it to them.
You know, I asked what, I've talked to Hines and he said that we're gonna be at Chilhawee.
Yeah.
But I have not talked to anybody in there.
I'm pretty sure we had the conversation, but I will make sure that I reach out to the chief, make sure.
I appreciate that's what's best.
Yeah, sure will. Alright.
Before he steps away, I have a question, I noticed your patch, is that, forgive me if it's been around a while and I haven't noticed it, is that a new rendering of your?
Oh, so yes, these are the new uniforms that we're going for with our, our two departments now. And it's on there, so this is the patch that when we put the agency together, we incorporated the new Smith County logo, which is the, the sun with the moon, or the sun and the moon. And the stars and everything else, the mountains and the, and the sun, and we wanted to incorporate that in with our patch so that we're part of the county, we are the county, and so that's part of it, so.
So my comment is, I want to commend you on it, I like it, it looks nice, it's professional, it's crisp, I think it's a good display.
Thank you very much. It is on our trucks now, so we have one of the trucks in Sawville now striped that way, our two trucks in Atkins are as well, striped that way, so we have.
Thank you.
I'm still getting a lot of positive feedback, I have EMS in Atkins. Response time, people just can't get over, we were so used to West Side Marion had to come all the way to Atkins that we could get up close to the county line apart, and response time is, people are happy.
They are, and with 145 is the call load so far up there, that's putting us to a 600 call load year, and that's 600 calls that are quicker, quicker, we are quicker too and we're, we're giving better care, or not better care than was, but quicker care than was, yes.
What's the average response time for?
From the, from the department end station to anywhere within the range of, it's, it's five to 10 minutes through there, so.
Pretty good?
Yep.
And the, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, no, you're good, go ahead.
I was just, I was gonna say, I mean, as far as the Sawville, the Sawville fonts and everything, the, the numbers and everything's working out well with what's there now.
Right, so we, we have brought on five full-time of the, and all of them were Sawville employees. We've brought five on, we have, are doing the interview process for four more right now, we had one more position that we needed to fill, so we'll get that done. That'll put us a full slate in Sawville with part-time people. And we are averaging about three calls a day and we're, we're answering those just, just well.
With ALS?
With ALS.
How's our revenue holding up on these?
So at this point, we are
Not yet much yet, but 90 days is the general.
The original setup would, would take 90 days for us to have all our licenses in. The, the good thing about it is in March, we started getting some revenue in, which means that our stuff was clear and we were good to go. So now we're getting, we're getting pretty good amounts in, I know that up to this past month, we had built out 75,000. And that was just built out, that doesn't mean we're getting 75 back.
Right.
So we've got 75 out and that was at the end of April, so hopefully we'll get some, some good returns on that.
Alrighty, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Moving on now to the ordinance committee, Dr. Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will defer to Mr. Ut if he would like to proceed with the recap.
Is Mr. Williams still late?
He is now.
And now.
Deputy Gout, the hearing makes its 60 years.
So the ordinance committee met May 5th, 115, at 115. Effectively, we discussed three potential changes to the zoning ordinance. The first was one for for battery storage facilities and energy storage facilities. The clip notes on that is we're getting some interest from companies that want to, to basically come in and put shipping containers full of batteries on a piece of property and pull power from the grid at night when there's a surplus, and then release it during the day when it's at peak demands. We don't have any additional requirements in our zoning ordinance, so that's what the ordinance committee debated. Ultimately, they did, the company that we're working with had some comments, and they've asked for an opportunity to address the ordinance committee, and so they tabled that until the next ordinance committee, which is scheduled for June the 1st. At the same meeting, we also discussed some other potential changes. One was wind energy, we also don't have any additional requirements in the zoning ordinance for, for wind facilities. And so they debated some proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, ultimately, there was a recommendation to schedule a public hearing in July to consider those changes. And then the third thing that we, that we discussed that day were the skill games. You may have seen some of this, Town of Marion recently adopted some additional regulations to basically cover these, some call it adult skill games, gaming or gambling type machines. And so we effectively borrowed a lot of what the Town of Marion had adopted. And the committee's recommendation was to schedule a public hearing in July to also consider those changes. So the, the hope is that we're able to meet in June, finish the discussion on the storage facilities, the battery storage facilities, and then come back at you next month with a recommendation for those proposed changes and schedule those with the other two in July. So that's the recommendation from the committee. Thank you.
Any discussion?
I just have a question, as it matters to your storage facilities, does that have anything to do with solar or is this?
Totally separate, a lot of solar facilities incorporate battery storage, and this company threw me for a loop. They have no solar component, they are just batteries.
They buy it when it's cheap at night, sell it back when it's more expensive at a peak time of day.
When these big plants get running, it's hard to bring, ramp them up and ramp them down, so they're, they're basically running continuously. So at night, when we're all asleep, nobody's using power, nobody's running the AC. And so they're able to pull that excess power off of the grid, stored in these batteries, and then in the middle of the day, when they turn the AC up, and there is a huge demand on the grid, then they can release back into the grid. Blowing your mind, aren't we?
Basically, we're just approving the public hearings for these.
We just turned all the batteries.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sounds like it's unanimous.
I feel like we have a lot more done in public safety with a lot less paper than the ordinance committee did. There was a lot of pages in that meeting.
There were. Not to consider though.
Alrighty. New business. Any new business?
No, sir.
Okay, we're moving on to report from the county attorney.
One update, Scott wanted to provide. And this kind of springs off something like alluded to earlier, which is finding people. Unlike Ms. Dow, she shows up. The vast majority do not. This is on Riverside Drive. Tried to have the sheriff's office sort of process, find the individual issue. Didn't work, hired a private process server, couldn't find, find her. So we're going back to the sheriff's office to try to locate her and sort of process. So we've got, got a, an amended summons today and are going forth with that, with the deputy of Smith County, is we can serve.
I don't know, graduated high school.
Can you find her?
I haven't had a reunion.
Had three reunions and she's not showing up in any of them.
Oh, won't she?
She's been hiding, I take it.
Well, so if we find her, we'll buy her for the next round.
Lincoln will pick her up, of course.
That's, that's where we are, he's he's worked at some of the other angles on some other properties where we're trying to locate people and such, but that's the one piece of news I had to add today.
Okay. Good to have you with us, by the way.
I appreciate it, everybody let me come up here, miss you all, lack of new chairs.
How about air conditioning?
I was, I was worried, I wore my jacket, and I said, no, you're sweating.
Not here.
Luckily, in the icebox, I'm still alright.
Chris is looking for penguins. I guess we're up to you, Sean, county administrator staff.
I just have a few quick ones. I've already said that we do have the, the bond funding for the radio tower. I will say that we presented a, an investment idea to Mr. Burkett. He came back and I think he has an equal to what Davenport had recommended, so I'm, I'm excited. Hopefully, we'll be able to, what we had envisioned was to receive enough interest to pay the first bond payment, if not the, the first two bond payments, because they're the interest-only ones, so I'm, I'm excited about that. For the Smith Promise Program, the college tuition scholarship, we do, if anybody has any more community organizations that they would like to include in the the eligible for volunteer for the students, they need to volunteer 10 hours each, each year. So this is a great time to get the, the youth involved in whatever we want to, to push, push them toward. So get that, if I, if I can get you to get that to honor by the end of day tomorrow.
Can they find people?
I think she has a pretty good list.
P.I. Or yeah, P.I.s.
Probably, that would be awesome. The only other thing, we talked last time about the, the federal campground, the Raccoon Branch Hurricane and the Grindstone. We do have any feedback from Mr. Wright, he wasn't able to, to make it tonight, but he reports that Raccoon Branch and Hurricane are both fully open now. Grindstone is the problem with the, the sewer lagoon. They have everything designed and ready for construction except for the money. So basically reports, he doesn't expect construction to begin this calendar year, he's hoping for early next year. All depends about on the, the federal budget.
How much money are you talking about?
He did not tell us that. I'd be curious to know, I mean, I wouldn't mind loading the federal government.
If fire revenue stream would be good to bring those people into this county, so yeah.
Would help.
You know, we're talking, you know, 50,000 dollars.
No, I, I would say Blue Ridge Discovery was about a quarter million.
Yeah.
I'd say it's somewhere in that range.
Could we request lost revenue?
They don't, they don't pay mill staff or lodging taxes for federal lands.
I know, but we could do a study, I mean, people that go camp there eat here. I know, but we could do a study. I mean, people that go camp there eat here.
Buy gas.
Buy gas, I don't hear.
I can tell you the economics of Choy area is greatly impacted a lot by the loss of grindstone camp.
Yeah.
I mean, you will see where you live now.
Don't see the campers like you used to.
You don't see the campers coming down through the Evergreen Market. That usually, it's unreal. And that campground stayed booked up the whole summer.
We might want to check in and see if they'll share some figures with us as to what it would take. I mean, that just might.
We might want to draft a letter of order with such information.
Well, I have a draft, a draft that was going to, it was for the elected officials from the last meeting. We got the feedback from Edward, that he might be here, but that's why I didn't send it, but we could get something out.
We're gonna send the letter in a couple of months and a resolution.
I think we put some corporate on.
Yeah. I turned that here, I thought. Put it in the room with all.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
My board might be out of business by, what, this weekend?
No, we only have.
Just don't hurt my social security check. All right, supervisor calm at time. Lori Deel.
All right. That's the first of all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for my tardiness in the meeting, but I appreciate y'all waiting on me and thank this board for recognizing our law enforcement and EMS, and thank you for understanding me getting a little emotional with Officer Pascal. He was special to a lot of us. And his wife is one of my very best friends, and it was just a huge loss to this community. So we appreciate all our law enforcement officers do, and of course, our EMS folks. And I'm excited that the school year's coming to an end. I'd like to congratulate all of our graduates from all of our high schools across the county and hope they'll stick around and or go off to college and at least come back and have a family here. And I'm excited to see all the great things the board is doing, and just hope everybody has a good evening.
All right.
First of all, I'd like to thank all our teachers. During Teacher Appreciation Week, the job is a very tough job, and if anybody's bored, we'd love for you to sign up to substitute teach just so you can, or drive a bus, or work in a cafeteria, or clean schools. We've got all kinds of openings everywhere. I did want to thank our teachers for all they do. They do a great job, and it's an extremely difficult job. And we're very thankful of the work they do. Also, I'd like to invite you to next week's graduations. We have a career center graduation on Tuesday at seven P.M. Nursing graduation at six P.M. on Wednesday. Northwood High School graduation Thursday at seven P.M. And Friday, we have six o'clock for Choy High School, eight o'clock for Marion Senior High School. Also, I'd like to say this. We've got two of our schools that have received some accolades, and we haven't finished testing yet, our state's testing. We've got one school that, there's thirty-eight divisions, I think, that participate in what's called the CIP program. And we have a school that's in the top five in writing, which is great for our area. And then today, we have a school that has, I don't know if you've seen all the federal subcategories that you have in testing now, and it's unreal, and they were green, which means they were in the upper ten percent, basically, in all subcategories for that. So that is great news for our, we've seen a lot of great, good gains this year in trying to pull learning loss from the pandemic out. So the biggest challenge is if we can get them to school, we can teach them. That's become a bigger challenge. I also like to update you a little bit on the lab school. That's going great. We'll get ten slots, Wood County, Smith County, Washington County, City of Bristol. Did a lot of work on that, and we, they have until September, probably mid-September to apply. We already have several applications in, and so it looks like that's going to be a popular thing going forward for any student that's going into any kind of healthcare field. So we hopefully will have ten, our cohorts every year in Smith County, which will help with nursing, optometrist, medical doctor, nurse practitioner, physical therapy, whatever it may be. And I know someone mentioned earlier about fentanyl, fentanyl awareness stays that we've done. I saw some schools on TV, Courtney, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think you may know, the day before yesterday, I saw that eighty percent of the drug overdoses now has fentanyl tied to it.
Associated.
Fentanyl associated, eighty percent of them. That's what they said on TV. Well, it's at over eighty percent, so I think that's what they're wearing. Thank you.
All righty, Andrew, my name next. Two comments. One was for V-Doc, and I could not think of it when they were here. But if you've been on this board even at the time, you remember Don Bales was here complaining all the time about the water off the interstate. Well, the man hasn't been dead for a year, and they finally come in and fixed fixed the road there where he had complained about for the last ten years. I mean, why couldn't they have done it when he was alive? I mean, he had a valid point, but it's finally gotten fixed. At least we hope it has. They came in and did something, but it bothered me that Tom's been dead now, six months maybe, and they came in and fixed it. I wish Don could have seen that. And number two, the newspaper lady is not here because she watches us on the video. And her company is cutting back hours, so that's why she's not here. It's not that she don't want to be here, it's just.
I want to say hello to the lady.
Well, they're cutting her hours, so. I just wanted y'all to know that. It's not that she don't like us, it's just that. Everybody be safe. I think we've had a good meeting. We got some things accomplished. Everybody be safe. And having said that, the next lucky person is Courtney.
I just want to also reiterate the teacher appreciation, also Nurses Week, I think Phil this week also. You know, just want to thank them for all they do. Me and my favorite job, working with the school as a school resource officer now, it's really opened minds up to a lot of things that they do. And I tell you, there's, you know, it's like law enforcement and community involvement and everything else, you know. A lot of people just don't see what goes on behind the scenes and everything, all the stressors and things that everybody has to go through. Same with the nurses. There's so much appreciation there for these people for what they do. I also just want to congratulate the upcoming graduates, the seniors. I have one myself who'll be graduating this weekend and next weekend. And it's bittersweet, I guess, for him and moving on. But I just want to congratulate all the seniors throughout the county and everything on the job well done. Hopefully, they'll utilize the Smith Promise that will be available, I'm wondering, right after this graduation for whatever they may do, and hopefully, they can help bring some trades back also to the county. You know, we're hurting a lot of areas for that, but again, congratulations. Thanks to everyone here on the board. Thanks to the staff for all you guys do. Doing a phenomenal job. I want to thank Mr. Williams for a lot of help on some things he's been working on this week, past couple of weeks, probably, or past five years, I don't know, with some stuff. Hopefully, with some of this stuff with V-Doc, we can just get it moving forward. I don't know that there's the perfect situation in that. I know ultimately, you know, they may have the, I guess, up wrong, but I think we need to do what we can for our citizens to ensure that they're taken care of. That being said, that's all I have.
Courtney, I'd just like to add something. I'm just talking about Smith Promise. I think we've got forty-some or sixty-seven graduates at the high school. My understanding, they've signed up for that program, and I've talked to several students at Choy High School and Marion High School who are taking the forward management. So I can tell you, it was greatly appreciated by the parents and students in this graduate class. So I think it's a real popular thing.
I'd love to have you change that mind.
Oh, certainly. And I've had several parents come to me at ballgames and say, "I thought you was going to here, but now they're going to do this." And of course, one of the good things is our community colleges have really taken on huge CTE programs, which will be half core of this situation. So it's not just going in, it could be in Career Center way, in trades and things also, finish up.
And I meant to ask this. I had to, I actually worked a ballgame this night, but the night that Virginia Highlands was doing down at Career Center. I hadn't heard anything on that, just curious as to how that may have went.
Mr. Ut, share hot dogs down there together, and Mr. Williams.
Hot dogs, not, hang on, that would be weird.
Let me say this. Dr. Hudson, the president of the HCC, Courtney. Dr. Hudson, the president of the HCC, said the financial aid people in there had gone nonstop. There was people waiting to get their financial aid paperwork, which is part of that.
Right.
So it wasn't super great to it by the students, but you have, you have ballgames going on all over the county. So, but anyway, going forward, I think probably a better time schedule going forward. And like I said, Highlands, we appreciate them. It's possible if we could do it like in the afternoon or something, because that would catch them before they go. So, anyway.
I'm glad to hear that, but I just, I've also seen a good response to that, and I think there's been a lot of minds changed. You know, when you leave this month, you can't watch it this morning.
Hey, listen, I've talked to at least eight kids that had no chance of going to college, but now they're going.
What's all about?
I'm not sure we missed anything any better.
Mr. Call. Last but not least.
Last but not least.
Them good turn.
That's a great motion, Mr. Call.
I had the pleasure of visiting the water department before the meeting and come here with a question that a citizen, the him and the two ladies was in there. They answered my question very professionally, done a good job, even though they had clothes down, I forced them to open the door. But they done a great job, and they requested that I put in for them a raise here tonight with you all. So I fulfilled my promise and motion to adjourn. God bless everybody. Take care going on. Appreciate the employees and echo what Courtney said about the kids and the law enforcement. We appreciate them. It's a pleasure working with you guys. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Roscoe. I believe we have a closed session?
Thanks, Landon.
I'd like to make a motion, entering the closed session under Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711, A1 Personnel Matters Discussion, Consideration, or Interview, excuse me, or Interviews of Perspective Camps for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance of the Motion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body Regarding EMS Operations and Personnel Update. Also under A3, Discussion or Consideration of Acquisition of Real Property for the Purpose of or Disposition of the Held-Still Property Regarding Mountain Empire Industrial Park. And then also under A5, Business/Industrial Prospects, Discussion Concerning Business or Industry, Considering the Expansion, Before No Previous Announcements Have Been Made Regarding Project Vote. Mr. Chairman, that's the motion.
All right, I have a motion to have a second. The motion's second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor going into the closed session. Say you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're in closed session. I guess we allow Mr. Williams and Anna and Lisa to join us and hear this.